Call to order of the Tuesday, September 28th, 2021 Portsmouth City Council Work Session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
And Mayor Glover is absent.
Council members, we have a Historical Preservation Commission appeal for consideration for 2601 Bayview Boulevard. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present his appeal, followed by 10 minutes from the Historical Preservation Commission Chair, and finally, we'll have questions and deliberation from City Council. We ask the applicant to come forward again with his 10 minutes.
Is he absolutely not present?
Looks like the applicant is not present.
The applicant advised staff that he would be here, but obviously, he is not.
Will we vote?
Council members, it's up to you if you want to hear from the Historic Preservation Commission and then deliberate then. Maybe at that point, the applicant may come in.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
That would be my pleasure.
Yes.
So, what was the consensus?
Yes.
You want to deliberate regarding this issue now?
Yes. Well, you would hear from the Historic Preservation Commission?
Okay.
Chair.
The Chair, please step forward.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Barnes, esteemed members of City Council. My name is Renee Schneider. I am the current Chairwoman for the City of Portsmouth Historic Preservation Commission. At our April 20, 2021 meeting, we were presented with HPC 2100044, which was a handrail replacement after the fact, at 2601 Bayview Boulevard, which is located in the Port Norfolk Historic District. At the time of our meeting, the applicant, Mr. Boswell, had removed and replaced the existing porch railing system consisting of the top rail cap, the top rail, bottom rail, and spindles/pickets or balusters, however you want to refer to them, that he said were rotted and needed to be replaced. As the pictures show, the original railing was much more substantial with more architectural detail than what was installed. On the ground is the original railing. He provided no evidence that the handrail was rotted and in need of replacement. Pictures provided to HPC appear to show that the handrail had been cut away from the posts and showed no sign of rot. We appreciate the fact that Mr. Boswell wanted to fix his home, but he could not understand that his repairs did not come close to what was destroyed and were not consistent with the Historic District guidelines. The end result of said repairs did not match the original in architectural detail, materials, or size, and as such, the commission denied his application by a vote of five to zero. If we want to keep our historic homes and neighborhoods as features to attract new homeowners to our city, then we must uphold the guidelines as they are written. We ask that you uphold the decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission and have the homeowner restore the front porch railings. Any questions?
Any questions from Council? Dr. Wood?
Yes. How did this issue initiate?
How was it initiated?
Right. How did it even come to the attention of the Historic?
Driving through the neighborhood. I noted the railings were on the side of the house. This issue was going on for like a year.
So, it was just a random drive-through?
I live in the neighborhood, so I see it all the time. I go by there, so when I did see it, I did report it.
Okay. Yeah. One of the issues that I know we've had before with the Historic Commissions and cases that have come, there have been cases where there was a house where all of the windows were replaced, and that was an issue, and the commission wanted the windows all taken out and put back. And the issue became, how was that even initiated? Are there other homes in Port Norfolk that have banisters replaced?
I'm sure there were, and I'm sure there have been.
Right.
However, he was placed with a stop work order in the midst of these repairs.
Right. Well, see, that's the issue. That's the issue that I have with it, that there may have been, but there's nothing in place that objectively measures when those things occur. So, it's as if you just happen to, and I'm not saying you individually, but you as a commission who just happens to see it. And to me, that's a little random. But the second issue that I had with it in reading the information was that there was some concerns amongst the commissioners and the applicant as far as contacting the city and not getting follow-up calls, and so there was an issue there. The third issue is, according to your guidelines, are there specifications for the particular banister that is to be replaced?
Repair in kind.
Right.
In kind, which constitute exactly the same materials and size that were removed.
Yeah, see, and that becomes interpretive when you say in kind. And that's been an issue too. What do you mean by in kind? You're talking about something that is being replaced from years ago, and what's the present materials now? And so, I'm not sure if, how you interpret in kind.
I understand what you're saying, but that's why we have the process that we do. If a homeowner comes to us, as they should, and submits an application, and they go, this is what we want to do, we help to advise them that these are the accepted steps, these are the accepted materials, and so forth.
Right. But this is after the fact.
This is after the fact, and unfortunately, these things are only reported by those who drive through the neighborhoods or who live in the neighborhoods.
And then my last issue, all the council members may have questions. According to the application, well, not the application, but the hearing, there's indication that the home is about to be sold?
That's what we were told, yes.
So evidently, the changing of the banister did not cause for others to want to buy into the neighborhood?
As far as I know...
Hold on, excuse me. And actually, the banister has not been completed. I believe it's supposed to be painted white.
Yes.
And just looking at it, I don't know if the cost for to repair that has somehow devalued the property, and so, I'm not in agreement with the denial because of the issues I've raised.
And I can respect that. The issues are that the architectural details that were there on the original railing are now destroyed. The only, he would have to replicate them. And anyone who buys one of these homes knows they're not cheap to maintain, but what he has replaced with, instead of the original railing, is nowhere near what was there. And that was our basis, is that he told us he replaced in kind, one for one, but it's not in kind, it's not the same size, does not have the same architectural design or detail. That was the original railing, top rail, cap, and the balusters. That's the original, and what's been replaced is extremely, for lack of a better word, clumsy compared to what was there.
Councilman Battle, and then Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke.
If a person don't know that they have to come through your agency, which is about 99% of the people in the city, that leaves them at a kind of disadvantage now. If you ride past a place and you see work being done, there are alternative approaches. You can go get a stop to work order, or you can say, go up and say, hi, my name is such and such, I'm from such and such and such. We try to preserve the dignity from the past, and if you're going to replace that, you're going to need to do it such and such and such. Are we approaching the situation from that, or are we just writing back and sending a stop work order?
As to the homeowners not being aware that they're in Historic Districts and they have to, you know, follow certain guidelines, that's in every homeowner's disclosure papers. They know they're buying in a Historic District, and it is supposed to be disclosed to them that there are certain measures and guidelines they have to follow when making repairs or changes to their home. As for approaching the homeowner, we can...
No, ma'am, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there's a couple of ways to do things, and do you think that that's an appropriate way to make a person aware? Even though we give folk papers with directions and things, having so many other things, something might get overlooked. You see what I'm saying? You can do it two ways. Yes, you can say, oh, stop the work, or you can say, hey, let's, I'm with this board, and we hold the dignity of the community and the property because of its age and so forth, and the federal government says that this, and this is how you should do it, and we would appreciate... And you know, you probably can get that at cities. These are things that make us come together as citizens.
Right, and we do do our best. I know that there are several commissioners that, as they walk their own neighborhoods that they live in, they speak to the people that live there. Hey, if you've got any questions, let me know. I do it myself when I see that new people have moved in. However, it can also lead to confrontation that we as... We may sit on this commission, but we are still ordinary citizens, and some of us may not be comfortable when a homeowner becomes confrontational with us. But part of our job is to educate the neighborhood, and that's what we do try to do. Once something like this has happened, they are not only in violation of the guidelines, they're also in violation of city code. No building permits were issued, no inspections were done. Not that we are in charge of any of that, but this also helps mitigate if there is an issue, that stop work order. It allows time for an inspector to go out when we say, hey, they're doing this, or, you know, they just ripped off a slate roof. We have very few slate roofs left. But if, like I said, if we want to maintain our Historic Districts and to keep them as beautiful as they are, and to keep these homes as beautiful as they are, and to attract new people to want to live in a Historic District, then we have to adhere to the guidelines.
And just for informational purposes, so that Council will know, for the Historical Preservation Commission, you have to live in certain neighborhoods to be on it, so a person from Port Norfolk would be on it representing Port Norfolk, same for Cradock Trust and things like that. We'll have Councilwoman Burke, and then Councilwoman Battle. I mean, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ma'am, thank you for the presentation. My question is, the banisters that were taken off and the in kind and the banisters that were replaced, what is the price difference on those?
That I do not know. We don't price materials.
Okay, so then...
That's not part of...
Then I guess that would be interpretive if the in kind was valuable, valued at the same cost of what was taken off as to what was replaced.
In kind for us means, you know, you don't take a tennis ball and replace it with a basketball or vice versa and say that's in kind. They're not the same. They're not even remotely the same. And that's what we want, that's what we try to do.
Right.
If you're going to replace something, or you have to fix something, please, it needs to look as close to the original as possible. Some of these homes are over 100 years old.
Right.
Once you take those historic elements or those architectural elements away, it's gone. And the more things that disappear in these Historic Districts, the closer you get to not having Historic District anymore.
Okay. My second question is, as a liaison to the Planning Commission, I recall hearing a previous Historic Preservation Review, and there was some conversation about the guidelines being updated because they were outdated, so have those been updated? When is the current policy?
We are still, they are still in the process of that. They have started top subtly.
Okay, so the date of the last revision?
July, do you remember?
2008.
That's what I thought.
2008. They have started the process, yes.
Okay, but it's... Thank you.
It's a lengthy one.
Councilman Moody, and then Councilman Woodard.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think the larger question is, do we see value in our Historic Neighborhoods? I mean, is it value there as a city? I think that question should always be foremost when we're deciding these things, and as Dr. Whitaker pointed out, in the past, I too have been critical of the inconsistency. But I think you have to weigh every case on its own merit. Couple of things. It's my understanding that this resident lived in the house and the community for a number of years. Is that correct?
Yes.
And he no longer resides there, but he's got the property up for sale.
There's no for sale on it now, sign on the property?
More than likely.
But it is, it was insinuated that he wanted to sell the property.
And getting back to the value question, even though, you know, a hand railing may seem small, let's equate it to a car, maybe a 1964 Mustang. Let's say I own a 64 Mustang, which I don't. I owned a 67 one time, and I'm glad I sold it. But anyway, let's say that 64 Mustang is in good condition. I go out and bump into something and mess up the front bumper. Okay, I priced a 64 bumper, and I deemed that too expensive, so I go to the junkyard, and I put a 1980 Mustang bumper on it. What has done to the value of that car is it's lowered the value, because anybody looking for, you know, an antique car, that's not going to be any value to them, or certainly lesser value. And that's the way I look at the handrail. It's not a big deal. I rode by there this afternoon, actually, on the right side, it's hard to see because the hedge is covering the rail. I literally had to stop and get out and take a look at it. It appears that the bottom rail is just a two-by-four that he's used, and of course, the balusters are self-evident that they don't have the design of the original, and the cap is just a run-of-the-mill cap, so... But bottom line is, he's lived there, he knew he lived in a Historic Community, and we're not talking about the price of a slate roof, which even now, there are alternate materials that are approved by the HPC. So, I'm going to support the commission. I think it's not asking a whole lot for him to put the railing back as close to the way it was as possible, because I think it does have value. So, and I think it's our job to protect the value of our Historic Neighborhoods.
Councilman Woodard.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. How you doing today?
Good.
You know, I'm all for preserving history and preserving our homes and our community. Like you say, it brings a charm to Portsmouth. It's almost one of our staples. I just wanted to know, because you did say you guys don't price materials, but as a commission, I know, being in charge of a Historic area, you guys are going to have to replace roofs, you're going to have to replace shutters, handrails. These things are going to deteriorate on a daily basis, steps, rails, balusters, you name it. I think, just to be, you know, all honesty, when it comes down to wooden rails, though, it can be a challenge, that those details that were in this home, in this railing, they kind of, you know, they don't do those things anymore as they used to. So, I'm just asking you, you don't think you guys may look at finding a price list, finding a vendor, so some of your homeowners may know where to go to to get these materials?
We're prohibited from recommending vendors or suppliers or anything like that. We're prohibited by code, I believe.
Okay, well, I just want to also expound on these features that you're looking for, for these railings. They're more incorporated into interior, you know, interior pieces of material. So, I think it gets a little hard, a little challenging when you're looking for exterior railings and exterior balusters, whatnot, you know, just to match exactly what you have here. From what I'm looking at, it looks like you can find some interior pieces like that, but for exterior, it can get a little challenging. So, you told me you guys are prohibited for doing it, but that is, that can be difficult, you know, to kind of get that look back exactly the way it was.
And we, I mean, we understand that it may not be easy as going to Lowe's or Home Depot, but when you bought this house, that's what you signed up for. You knew it wasn't going to be easy, you knew it wasn't going to be cheap.
I got you, but if people don't have their skill set to put the details back into those railings like it was, it can be challenging, and I think that should be considered when it comes to putting balusters back.
Which we are, but unfortunately, like I said earlier, this is nothing compared to what was there. If you're going to replace something, at least get as close as you possibly can as to what was originally there. Not, I mean, we don't want all the homes duplicated. It's not our intention for the guidelines state, don't do false historic elements. And we're not asking them to do false historic elements. We just want it to look as close to the original as possible in design and size. You don't take out a 10-foot window and put in a 4-foot window. It just doesn't work. You don't take out four-by-four posts and put in, you know, a two-by-two.
Understood. Do you have any other cases of people replacing railings in that area?
Not that have come before us, no.
So this may be your first case of someone trying to replace an Historic railing?
We have had issues with weekend warriors that come in, rip everything out, and put up a new one. It can be done, there are people who do it, and unfortunately, we don't have any control over that. But when we see a home being taken apart, or elements being taken apart, we try to prevent, you know, any further damage.
So it has been examples in the past?
I don't know of any personally or any set examples, but I'm sure it has.
Thank you.
This commission rotates, so I'm sure it probably has before.
Councilman Battle would like to see the banisters again. Could we put it on the screen?
If the balusters were painted white, do you think there would be a lot of sticking out?
Yes.
It would?
Yes. Mainly because I know what's supposed to be there, and it's not there anymore. That top rail, the original rail, top rail?
Yes, ma'am.
Should have been beveled?
Yes, ma'am.
To allow rain to fall off of it. Now, it's just completely, it's just a flat, two-by-four, almost, just flat. So, all it's going to do is just, there's no detail to it.
Do we have any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here yet? Well, it doesn't look like the applicant is here. So do we have a motion on the floor? Motion and a second.
Vice Mayor, I'm going to ask Ms. White to explain what a yes or a no will mean in this case.
Okay. Because this was denied by the Historic Preservation Commission, a vote of yes is to concur with the denial, a vote of no is to approve it. I know that's going to sound crazy. So how about this? Let's simplify.
It's a dino vote hearing, so...
Yeah, exactly.
So you can start from scratch.
So we can start from, that's what I was going to say. We can start from scratch. Yes, to approve it, no, to deny it.
Councilman Wood?
That's what I was going to say. It depends on the motion.
Yes, exactly.
So I move to approve the applicant's appeal.
Okay.
Is the move in properly second? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
I'm going to accept the applicant's changes, so if that's a yes or a no...
That's a yes, sir.
Okay.
Based on the motion from Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover is absent. And Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
The applicant's appeal has been approved. We're good.
Madam City Manager, please proceed with our next item.
Yes. Deputy City Manager, Lady Terry, will present staff recommendations regarding the management of the project. We're coming for the conference.
Council members, I ask that we preserve our questions for the end.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Barnes, council members, Madam City Manager, City Administration, and citizens. I am here as a follow-up on the spending plan for the funding received relative to the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic health crisis. the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic health crisis. I can proceed, and then we can, okay. Let me see, is that you or me? Okay. The ARPA Fund objectives is to respond to COVID-19 pandemic health crisis, to meet the urgent needs throughout the community, to ensure every resident of Portsmouth has an opportunity to become vaccinated, and to work as a team to bring an end to COVID, to the spread of COVID-19. The approaches in which we would like to begin that would be city revitalization, direct payments to citizens, community organizations, businesses, and grassroots organizations. As you recall, the breakdown of the categories, I'll go through them briefly, briefly. You have infrastructure, and these categories represent categories and subcategories that are approved through the federal funding for this ARPA program. Infrastructure, water and sewer, public health and safety, citizen direct payments, community, business support, homelessness, broadband initiatives, recreation programs and facilities. $56.8 million is what both allocations from the federal government will cover. At present, we have actually received $28 million of that funding. Infrastructure, the program list and the description of each, what we are requesting is $14.4 million. The seawall replacement, and that would be the replacement at North Inlet, for $6.5 million. Operations, which is the building replacement at Public Works, that has been a concern because we want to be able to ensure that when citizens need assistance, especially if we have a flooding, that they can actually get to the facility to provide services. Project design, security fencing, to provide and ensure access control at Operations Facility on Frederick Boulevard. Ebony Heights, to provide additional outfall for the western portion of Ebony Heights to reduce flooding. And sidewalk replacement, the right-of-way restoration associated with utility projects. Water and sewer, this project, or this proposed amount would be $13.2 million. This is dedicated to Prentice Place Neighborhood, which is $6 million. This is for the neighborhood revitalization to include water, sewer drainage, roadway reconstruction. This is phase one of three. Elevated tank rehab for the Churchland and Victory Boulevard tank restoration. Sewer pump stations, rehabilitation, aging sanitary sewer pump stations. Public health and safety, the replacement of 30 police cars, two-fire apparatus, police retention, and that would include a $5,000 retention payment for the complement of 249 police officers, or the complement. Essential personnel, frontline and hazard pay. Citizen direct payments. We have a senior tax relief program that we want to streamline and expand. Currently, we spent about $1 million for that program. We would expand that program to allow more eligible seniors to be able to participate by reducing or increasing the income limits. Senior care credit, we want to give or allow seniors to have some type of health expense credit, if they qualify and if they're eligible. Universal basic income, monthly payments to families. Community, neighborhood street lighting, we've been working with Dominion Power as it relates to converting the LED lights on the streets targeted for, which are darker. Crime reduction strategies, 1.6 million community-based crime reduction outreach, that category would be $2 million. Business support, we want to offer business support for local small businesses and minority business development. That program would target the smaller local businesses, which include 25 or fewer employees. And they would be dedicated to micro businesses, they would target outreach efforts to ensure full participation of all eligible local minority businesses in the program. Homelessness, we are looking at a site for a homeless shelter right now. Portsmouth has a homeless shelter, but it's not owned or operated by the city of Portsmouth. This would ensure that we have an outreach and could assist and help more homeless to get on their feet or provide them with a secure, comfortable place. Total of 6 million. Broadband initiative would be expansion of our broadband currently, connectivity, economic development, public safety, and operations cost reduction of 3.5 million. Recreational programs and facilities, before and after-school programs, the student scholarships, recreation field replacement would be the big number here for budget in that category, and that would go toward facility improvements, I.C., Norcom, Charles Peet, and Field House Lighting. Guidelines and criteria. The guidelines that we have associated with these programs would include services provided by the organization, so they would have to provide a list of things that the organization or the services that they provide. Provide a copy of the application or legal consent when applicable. So basically, if someone has an application that they are requiring or asking the citizens to fill out, demographic purposes, so that we can see the areas in which they are targeting, we're asking that we receive a copy of that, so that legal can officially review it to ensure we're not asking questions that are not legal. Quarterly compliance reporting would be what is a requirement of ARPA. So we're asking that that be a part of the compliance reporting that the organizations would have to provide in order to continue funding. Five-year record retention for auditing purposes is associated with ARPA, and that is a requirement of ARPA. Criteria, program goals, focus, purpose, and objectives. Portsmouth residency, we want to keep money within the city. Current Portsmouth current official business license, we want to ensure that you are legal current business practicing. Provide WNI for reporting, that's how we identify your tax ID number and disbursement of funds. And we would highly recommend vaccination. And why I'm, that would seem obvious, I just want to add to that. The money is for public health safety, it is for the stop and ending of the spread of COVID-19. So the recommendation would be, if you're out in the community trying to end COVID-19, and we give you program dollars, we would hope by you engaging in the community, you would be vaccinated. Terms and conditions, must meet all reporting deadlines. One business entity, meet all applicable criteria. Unauthorized activity will default in funding future program dollars. First-come, first-served basis until funding is exhausted. This is two years that we have this opportunity. Senior programs. Some of the program criteria for that would be, you must be 65 or older to be in a senior program. Portsmouth resident, there is an application with some of these processes as it is currently. Senior real estate relief qualifications will be temporarily expanded by city council for two years if approved. Could go further, but that would be up to city council. Program administered through social services for the direct payments. Programs will have criteria. Again, senior programs that we have now have an income requirement, so we're trying to expand that so more seniors can qualify for the program. First-come, first-served basis until funding is exhausted. Portsmouth city employees' program information, must be an active and current city employee as of September 30 of 2021. Must be vaccinated by October 4th, but we are looking to expand that so that more of our employees could participate in this program. We have, the city itself, for the guidelines of where we are with vaccinations, is at a high rate of people not being vaccinated. So what we're trying to do is encourage our city employees to become vaccinated. This would cover full and part-time employees. Cannot be on an active, on any active or extended leave status. Proof of vaccination, all employee names will be provided by human resources to qualify. Direct payments. Program information, income requirements, right now, there is a guideline that is set by ARPA for this program, so the guidelines would come and with social services would do the program, so the guidelines would be set by the social services, as it relates to what's a requirement for ARPA. Portsmouth resident, non-recipient of SNAP, TANF, or Medicaid, just as a reminder, and at some point, if there, I'm sure there will be questions. If you meet a certain guideline, then your benefits will be reduced. So we want to ensure that we are able to reach those people that don't fall within these categories, or they lose their funding for other benefits. Application process, program administered through social services, ARPA state and federal guideline adherence. Get vaccinated or get COVID was what the Health Department representative came and discussed with us this week, so I just wanted to make mention of that. I'm sure you have questions, I'm here, I'm ready to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions? Councilman Woodard, and then Councilman Moody.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Terry, for the presentation. The council will ultimately have to approve how these funds are spent and distributed. And so, as I look at this, it's still at a stage where it's very broad and vague, and also, I would think before council would act, that it would be an opportunity for the public to express how these funds should be used as well. I know at the last meeting, you had mentioned about council could approve it, give the authority last, at the last meeting, but once again, like I said, it's still, it's still broad at this point, as far as the criteria for who, how many people this will impact, and I think that we would want to see those numbers, because the figures that are in the presentation, they don't give us any indication of how many people are being impacted, it's just giving us dollar figures. The American Rescue Act, it talks about Americans, so the focus that I think council spoke about at the last meeting was that we wanted to see as many of our residents being helped because of the pandemic, persons are hurting, they're in crisis. And so, the emphasis here on this citizen's direct payment. I know, and I appreciate that it has been extended some since our last meeting to include the senior tax relief, senior care. There's no indication of how many seniors this amount would reach. My question on the senior tax relief specifically, is that you mentioned that right now, that tax relief has about $1 million set aside for tax relief, is that correct?
So right now, they have a tax relief of $1.3 million budgeted. $1 million is, has actually gone to retire, well, seniors who request and are eligible for this relief. So what we want to do is expand it as far as what the eligibility or the requirements are, so more people can be eligible for it.
Right, so my question, when you have up here 1.2 million, is that an additional 1.2 million, or is that 200,000 more from the million?
So it's an additional 1.2 million, and let me explain. So for the purpose of tax relief, and I think I didn't explain it well the last time, is that you all, as council, we budget for that money. The only way we can replace that through ARPA is to spend it, and ARPA will allow us to replace those funds. So I can't give a direct payment to a senior for taxes, because it's general taxes, but I can spend it out of the general fund and replace it with ARPA dollars. Where there is a shortfall in revenue, those dollars are there to cover it. You know what I mean? So, I couldn't give you an exact figure, because all I could go with was what we currently have. So what we currently budget now is 1.3, what we currently use is a million. So I added another 1.2 million to that, to be able to open that up for more seniors. So it's in addition to what we already budget.
Okay, so you have any idea about how many more seniors that would reach?
Yeah, so right now, it was a million, I don't have the senior count, but I can tell you, that right now, we have about 16,000 seniors in the city of Portsmouth. We actually, that are, I think in the program, I can't say 11,000, but there, I think it's like a 16%, but I know that because of the eligibility requirements, and let me just mention though, since we're on that, right now, to be eligible for the program, I think, I don't want to think, I want to be able to tell you, because you can see it on the website, your maximum income is $30,000. That's income.
The senior's maximum income.
Yes. So which means you are below poverty level, if you're able to get into that program. And so, to do that, for a resident to qualify for this component, a household must have no more than $30,000 gross income, annual income, and financial assets of no more than $75,000, excluding the value of your home and land upon which the home site, home site is there. So by expanding this, because I looked at some additional, the city's, $100,000. Now, we're talking about $30,000, which includes your social security, Medicare, any retirement. I mean, that's really low. If we expand it to, say, $75,000 to $100,000, more people will qualify.
Okay, and that's, that's the plan?
That's the plan.
Right, right.
Correct. You also mentioned, you mentioned something else. Oh, okay, so when you say broad categories, I just want to understand what you mean by broad categories.
Yeah, so for example, when you, when you were talking about seniors, who is a senior? When we're talking about direct payments, who's getting these direct payments? What's the criteria for what individuals will get those direct payments? And then, therefore, can we project how many citizens that will actually impact at $500,000?
So for a family size of an income requirement of two, so the income limits, because again, they have to fall into certain categories for ARPA, and it's the actual site that you have to go in to determine the area. So the area determines how many people now become eligible that are below a poverty level. That's why this program has been moved to social services, because social services has that information at their fingertips. So there is no possible way So there is no possible way for me to tell you exactly how, but I can say to you that based on the information that we have, we are budgeting $500 payments for 24 months. That's a guideline I can provide to you.
So at 500, how many people would that impact?
I got you. So based on what we budgeted, so if you have 50 families, because based on the criteria, based on what ARPA says and based on the families, for instance, we have three different levels here. If we cover 50 families for 24 months, that's $600,000. That's a $500 payment for 24 months. 75 families would be $900,000. 100 families would be 1.2 million.
I think too, for time purposes and also for, so we can make sure that we are aware of this stuff and not just hearing it, I would like to see it written down and sent to us in an email if that's okay with council.
But if I may speak.
Because right now, a lot of this, like Councilman Whitaker said, is very broad. And we would like a detailed overview of everything, line items that say exactly what is going to be spent on and things of that nature.
So what I would say is, it seems like you're more focused on the citizen direct payments than you.
No, I'm focused on everything. So with that being said, I would like to see line items breaking down, not just this very broad and sent, no, this is very broad.
How is that broad when I'm talking about C-Wall replacement?
Because for one, like I said, when it comes to all of the categories, you are not breaking it down in line items for us to understand. You're just saying project design, nothing else related to that. So that's what we want as a council to actually see what is, what is it being spent on? What's the details of all those things? Kind of like when he said with the direct payments or the senior payments and things of that nature.
Madam, City Manager.
Yes, I've been trying to get in the queue. We are in the process of developing all of that detail that you're requesting. We wanted to give you the breakdown just to get a sense of direction from the council, but you will have a complete line item with any criteria that goes with it. Of course, the projects themselves speak for themselves. But every line item you see there will have a breakdown of what those cost estimates are along with what criteria, if applicable, would go with it.
Councilman Battle. I'm sorry, were you done?
I'll come back.
We have any more questions? Councilman Moody.
Couple of things. I agree with my colleague about we do need more detail. One point I wanted to make on the senior real estate tax relief qualifications. You mentioned the level of income, $30,000. One thing that hasn't been done. When was that number established?
Council established that in, I believe, I looked at it, 2000, no, 1970, 1988?
1988, that was a good year. But I guarantee you, $2,021 versus $1988 is a world of difference because of inflation. I think that needs to be indexed to the CPI at least every three or four years, whatever this council determines. What we're doing, we're giving somebody something and we're taking it back. And I say we, you know, inflation is taking it back. It's eating away like a cancer. And compared to 1988, I would like for staff to get back and see what that number would be today. Because that's, that's what we need to be dealing with, real numbers. A 1988 number is just enhancing the poverty out there in the community in some cases with these senior citizens. The other thing, before we give direct payments or payments to businesses, I think one of the criteria should be that the taxes are current. We don't want to give money away to people who've not paying their taxes. So I would like to see that incorporated. I do think we should have a public hearing to have the public weigh in on what they feel about these things. The other thing is, the last page of get vaccinated or get COVID, that's, that's not factual. You can be vaccinated and get COVID. Lots of people are doing that. It's just the science of it. So we need to eliminate that page.
So, but you do understand that the reason that we have these dollars is to be able to combat COVID-19?
Okay, that, I'm fine with that.
Okay, just want to make sure that's clear.
But let's deal with accurate statements. You know, it's not an option that if I get vaccinated, I will not get COVID. I get the flu shot and you can still get the flu. The same thing with the COVID vaccination. The deal is, you hopefully won't get it as worse.
And I also want to just mention that as far as the senior real estate taxes relief, we also provide veteran tax relief. What I was giving you is what we have budgeted in order to expand the program so that we could actually begin because we're going into our fourth quarter. So just make, I just want to be clear that, you know, we're trying to have people to apply for it and ensure that they can get coverage as soon as possible.
Councilman Whitaker.
So as we, as we look to define direct payments and how that will look, the hope is that we are impacting people at different levels. Like everyone's not a senior. Everyone doesn't have a real estate tax issue. And so we want to make these programs as expansive as possible to hit people in different areas. And so when, when you have up here, and I was interested in hearing the explanation. And I think you mentioned, when you say that persons cannot be on the different subsidized programs, can you explain that a little more as far as if they were to receive, that would make them ineligible?
That's where I come in. Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of City Council and City Manager. So in looking at your request, there were some things we needed to bring to light to the city for them to consider on the part of social services. When we look at the federal poverty level and anybody who receives, whether it be TANF or SNAP, any reoccurring income is counted. So if you gave, if you decide a council wanted to give citizens who are receiving benefits, $300, $500, and they were on benefits, if you gave it to them more than a one-time thing, we would have to count it in social services. By counting that income, it puts the person at risk of a reduction in their funds or discontinuation of the funds. So what my recommendation was to the City Manager to consider was to consider the ALIS population. And what that stands for is asset limited, income constrained, but employed. So that might be your citizens that you make five or $10 above what social services guidelines are, you don't get benefits. You're not eligible. This deals with those, that overwhelming population that you have in the city who are your cashiers, your waitresses, other people. This makes it more inclusive. And looking at some of the research, and it's on the Virginia Department of Health and also with United Way, they track the ALIS population. So the last data that was up there, that was updated was April 15, 2021. Portsmouth had over 19,689 people who qualify under ALIS. So in my recommendation, it was looking at how do we address those people? The other thing you should know about the benefits with social services right now because of COVID, when it comes to SNAP benefits because of the state, all people receiving SNAP benefits right now receive the maximum allotment for SNAP benefits according to their household. When it comes to TANF benefits right now, we are not allowed to close any TANF cases by the state. The only way we can close a TANF case, which is the money part of it, is if the citizen was dead, if you came to us and requested that your case be closed or if you moved out of the state. So that, in that sense, they are still receiving benefits, still receiving support, and there are other programs within social services to still address some of the needs. But the population that continuously falls between those cracks might be those people that make, like I said, those waiters and cashiers and other people who may make $27,000, $28,000. And by the time I pay my rent and I feed my family, I don't have anything else. So subsequently, they're still living in our food pantries and stuff trying to get assistance because they don't qualify for social services, but they're caught.
So the direct payment amount, does that incorporate the ALIS population? The 500,000?
Yes. What we're proposing for the direct payment is the ALIS population. Now, the city will be in discussions on what amount and what they choose to do, but that's the population.
And you know, based on 500,000, how many ALIS that would reach?
Well, from the last data, we have over 19,000 families. It's looking at what's in the budget, what's affordable, what you can do with the money that you have considering all the other projects of the city.
Okay, and you mentioned that for recipients of SNAP, TANF, or Medicaid, that they cannot receive reoccurring payments.
Correct.
What is considered a reoccurring payment?
So an example might be if, with some cities, localities are doing with these ARPA funds, if I say I'm going to give 50 families a payment of $500 for maybe a period of a year, that's reoccurring. That's not the same as saying, I'm going to give Mr. Franklin over here $500 as a one-shot deal. That's different.
So if we give those persons a one-shot direct payment, that's not reoccurring?
Correct.
Okay, so what if you give it to them not monthly, but you give it to them again in the second fiscal year? Where you have now new funds, a new fiscal year?
Calendar year with DSS.
Would that be considered reoccurring?
I would say no, but I will double check.
Okay, because I would still like to see if we can provide to some of the most neediest people in our community a direct payment. And if that's the way we do it, then a direct one-time payment?
Any other questions for me?
Councilwoman Burke.
I just have one question. Under the approaches, I see grassroots, but I couldn't really identify which organizations were targeted as, is it the recreation programs and the broadband? Where are the grassroots?
These are the grassroots. The organizations who come in and provide a a proposal to say, this is what we can actually do in the community to assist in fighting COVID-19. So they would, we've been meeting with grassroots organizations since we announced that we were getting any money. And so what they are doing is bringing us their proposals to say, this is how we can assist. Why we put it in a category where there are the, just full dollars because we don't know how much, there may be some that come and say, I only need 10,000, some that may come to say, I need 100,000. So they are providing us our budget and their proposals. So we just put an amount there so that, as a placeholder, so that we could really be able to work with more than just one or two organizations across the city.
And I guess my, and my final question is, I know that we already approved our budget and it's already listed, but is this ARPA fund going to hold its own budget space with line items? Or are we going to just put it under general fund and subcategory it out?
Right, so the way ARPA is set up is that it is under a grant. And so that's why we were trying to get the categories identified because whenever you're dealing with a budget overall, you have your categories and then we break them out into line items based on project spending. And so in order to do that, that's why we have to start with a baseline budget. That's why these categories are there. That's why we've identified the programs within the categories or subcategories. So for the information that you all are requesting, unless there's something, like Dr. Whitaker, if I may ask, could you please tell me exactly what the expectation is? Now, I understand for the ARPA fund proposals, direct payments, you want to know how many. But are you wanting to know how many it is? With $100, $200? What is your, what is, what is your vision for that?
Well, I think what council has indicated at the last meeting that we want to get funds into the hands of our citizens. Now, how that will look? I think you should present those options to us that if we want to reach this number of people, it's going to cost this amount. If it's this number, then this amount. But I think we should be presented those options and the detail as to how one would qualify.
And for, so, and I'm just, I'm asking for clarity. So you want the options to be the, what it would reach for if it was a one-time? Now that you have the information to say a recurring payment will not sustain or is not going to work for the people who already have benefits? Or you want both?
Well, I think you might be talking about two different things, if I heard you correctly. The recurring payment question I was asking, that was, that was to reach persons who are receiving substantial subsidies from the government, SNAP, TANF, Medicaid. So that becomes a one-time funding issue. For those that don't fall under that, that may be a reoccurring payment. Now, how that will look, I think, that's what, that's what we're saying. We would want to see the detail of how many persons that will reach based on the calculations that you come up with.
Okay.
And so for, I do have another question.
Let me, where are you done? Okay, Councilman Whitaker.
On the infrastructure.
Yes.
Where we have the C-Wall, C-Wall replacement, 6.5 million.
Yes.
Prior to ARPA, we were already going to, that was already in the budget. Was the C-Wall issue already issued prior to these federal funds?
Right, so.
So how were we going to, how were we going to pay for it prior to ARPA?
It is phases. So at some point, we would have to go out for a bond, additional spending. Because I just want to remind, as we are looking at capital projects, council approves a project and it's up to us to now go and find the funds to do it. If we're not able to pull it out of the general fund at year end, if we don't have those funds that we can push back into capital projects or identify a project, it's, you have to have the cash available to do those projects. So you may see a project that the council says, hey, I want to get this project done. There may not be funding identified. So in two years, that project is still on the books, but we don't have the funding or the dollars to do it unless we go after some kind of bond or go into more debt to do it. So this is allowing us the opportunity to not have to go after debt to do something that we would have the funding to do, available funding.
But we have some programs within what we've designated as for going out for bonds that council can either decide to do or not to do. And so it's not a commitment per se if council decides not to fund those projects through a bond. If we, if we say we're not going to do this project.
You would have to, if you've authorized a project, you would have to defund the project.
Right, and if we defund it, then those funds are available for other uses.
But you have, may not have identified where the funds are coming from to be able to do the project. So, so in other words, so it's not confusing. We have capital projects. Say we want to do the water tanks, just for instance. Council has come and said, hey, we need to refurbish these water tanks and rehab. That was a priority for council, but there were no dollars identified to do that project. So if it wasn't for ARPA funding, just say everything was happy in the city of Portsmouth and no. and no additional dollars came in. We were flatline budgeting out another quarter. You have authorized a project, but we don't have the dollars to do it. So, maybe two years down the line, we may say, "How can we fund this project?" I know, let's go after some bond money to be able to have the cash to fund it. So, it's authorized, but there are no dollars identified to be able to do that project, so it sits on the books. Is that fair?
And so, for example, the six point five million you have, that's using the ARPA funds. If we were to have stayed on the same course that you had for funding this seawall replacement, then that would free up this, some of this six point five per se to use in other areas.
Right. And I think seawall project has been going on for years. And so, this is a one-time opportunity to not have to use any of our general fund money to be able to fund a project. Get it out the way, since these dollars are available, and it won't cost the city any money to have to get it done.
If it's, if, if there's no objection from council, I think this is a very constructive conversation, and I think it would be very productive if, just like during our budget terraces, and we sat down one-on-one and were able to ask questions and get, instead of trying to...
That'd be great.
Do it all right here, and it's time limited. And so, if, if it's no objection from council, if, if council members want to meet with the city manager one-on-one and Ms. Terry to discuss this.
I think that's fair, but could we get the consensus of council? Those who are in favor, raise your hand?
Yes.
And those who are not, raise your hand? Looks like that's the direction that we're going.
Perfect. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I hope that as a result of that, we'll come back with some more concrete specifics, so that when we present it to the citizens, for them to see, they'll have information to critique and ask questions, and we can hear their viewpoints.
I'm fine with that.
That's perfect.
Councilman Battle, did you still have something?
Yeah. I, I know in the past that they did the seawall in four phases. And the fourth phase was supposed to have been the completion of the downtown seawall. So, what are we trying to do? Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moody, you were on the council then. Didn't we do the seawall in phases? And it was four phases? And I think when Mr. Whitaker, Lisa was here, they started the fourth phase? So, what are we trying to do to the city, well, seawall at this time?
So, I would defer to the city engineer, who would be able to give you that information.
Okay. And before he does that, maybe we need to, if you haven't already done it, ask each department, what do they need done? What are they lacking in in providing a service to help our citizens? I mean, it's police departments, social services. Because their input can, you know, be a delight that lead us through the tunnel. And if, if we could get that, and they give us a report on what they need, but heavy healthcare service, how can they better serve the public? What funds can we allocate to give all of those departments a face lift? I think that would be a, a good, good, good way to go.
Councilman Battle, we did. That's how we actually came up with the list. And when we meet independently with you all, we will be able to divulge so much information. But we tried for time purposes to give you what we thought you were needing or wanting, but the detail of what you're requesting would be better presented separately or, you know, however y'all wanna do that independently.
If they give a, a report, we just couldn't see the reports, that's all, on what they think.
And that would be great, but I think...
Because that would help us to identify and to move in the right direction. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
And I understand that you all have it, and you all got a, a vision, but we like to join the party, that's all.
And I think, and it, the, I, I definitely appreciate the one-on-one because we can treat it just like we did budget season for these dollars. And when we met with you all independently, you had questions that were beyond what may have been presented on a presentation, which allowed us to give more information and answer those questions that may not have been, you may not have been able to answer and ask in a council setting. But again, I'll defer to Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, member of city council. With respect to the seawall, it's divided into sections. There are seven sections. We didn't necessarily complete the sections in that order. What you're referring to, we've completed section four. We're currently working at the Holiday Inn section. Right now, that is section, I think, section five. There's two sections that are remaining left to be repaired, that one at six and a half million to North Inlet. Then that just leaves a small section right there next to the Flatpole Peninsula.
So, one question. So, when we actually, when we actually sell the property, and so we can get someone to develop our downtown area, would they have some input of how they wanna do the seawall? Or is that not included when the property is sold and we get somebody to develop the downtown area?
The seawall city property is owned by the city.
Okay.
One last question. Just one last question about the Portsmouth city employees. And I know this presentation is being aired, and I know people are gonna wanna know how that plays into our city employees being qualified for ARPA funds. Let me try to get to that slide. So, for the city employee, well, here, I just...
Number nineteen, okay. So, for the city employees, the ARPA funds allow you to address essential workers. Hazard pay, frontline, people who are in direct communication and contact with the public. And what we're trying to do is incentivize to get more people vaccinated. They are dealing with the public. And of course, we all know, some people who aren't vaccinated, they don't wear masks. Some people do wear masks. So, it's just an incentive program to ensure that because we have these dollars that are dedicated to COVID health and safety, those frontline workers, putting them on the frontline, ensuring that they're vaccinated, will reduce the F, the COVID, you know, spread of COVID-19. Of course, like Councilman Moody said, it may not end it, but at some point, these dollars are dedicated for that. And that also, that category goes, we're talking about police officers. We're talking about police officers who are in direct communication with the public. And we're just trying to reduce the spread of COVID-19 by incentivizing and giving them programs that will entice them to do or to get vaccinated.
Councilman Moody?
Is this like a mandate?
No.
So, I was trying to figure.
No.
But, and, and the reason why I say that, I, I mean, what, what are you saying, proof of vaccination, so if they...
Incentivized.
If they don't have that, they don't get?
No. That's what ARPA is for.
Because, because the unvaccinated is not a threat to the vaccinated. I mean, science bears that out.
So, I'm not a scientist, but I'm going by the number of deaths and how many people have cases in Portsmouth.
There've been way too many deaths, but we shouldn't let the hysteria about the number of deaths cloud the, the fact that science says, if you're unvaccinated, you're a risk to yourself. You're not a risk to somebody that's vaccinated.
I, I think the issue, I'm sorry. I hear, I hear what you're saying, Councilman Moody, but I think, I think the issue that we have to deal with as a council and when this is presented is a, a legal issue that I think the city attorney would need to inform us on. Because at the federal level, there are some requirements, and I believe at the state, too.
Yes.
And so, if we're requiring this, do we have the authority to do it? Are we, so that's really, whether someone believe in vaccination or not, that's not my issue.
But law is law, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, if I, if the, if the law says we can require it, and it's a majority up here that wants to do it, that's, that's where I am.
And some of that's yet to be determined, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'm, that's... So, so in the budget here, because I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
And also, the state, we have constitutional officers, we have VHS and social services. So, those are considered like state employees that are required.
So, in, so in the presentation here, where are those funds accounted for?
I'm sorry, I have to go back. Community, public health. Public health and safety.
Public health, okay.
Slide number seven.
Okay. And so, you know, so the detail of that, that's covering who, how many?
Yes, yes, yes. Right now, the city has two thousand plus employees, full and part-time. Seven hundred have been identified as vaccinated, which they have to go to the employee self-service portal and upload their vaccination card to prove that they have been vaccinated. And those numbers are what we're trying to increase. The, the count now, I think, is twenty-one, twenty-two percent of Portsmouth is in crisis. We're in the highest number, but I won't go through all that, but...
So, where you have on the Portsmouth city employees, back to that, where you say, "Cannot be on any active or extended leave status."
Right.
Is that ARPA stipulated, or is that something we're coming up with?
We're, and let me explain briefly. We have employees that are on workers' comp that may be out because, due to an injury, and they haven't been working for a while. We don't pay them a hundred percent of their salary, but, but they're still considered active employees. We have people who are on military leave that may be out or have been on military leave for two or three years because that is a requirement, we have to hold their position. If they're not currently here as a frontline worker doing and providing services to the city, then we were looking at those people as excluding them because they're not fighting on the frontline, providing services currently. Because they're active, but they're not working.
So, so what about when you say a person who's on workers' comp? So, they've been injured while on the job here, working with the city?
Did we have one per, yes.
Okay, right. And so, they're not receiving one hundred percent of their pay?
No.
Okay. So, wouldn't this be an opportunity for ARPA to help with those persons? Because if they're not receiving one hundred percent of their pay, they're probably struggling.
Well, let me just...
And so, would that be an option for council to consider? Where, where you could pay some difference with the funds we have?
So, in order to get a full picture, so that the determination can be made by council, we had a person on workers' comp since nineteen seventy-eight. And he was still receiving sixty percent. Now, do you believe that that person would be, would qualify as a frontline?
But see, that's unfair to pull out an extreme example.
But I, I'll be honest.
But we, you'll deal with that. But I'm talking about general. You know, we can always come up with the extreme, but the extreme shouldn't necessarily measure what we do. You know, so I'm, I'm saying that we have these funds, people are struggling. This might be an opportunity to bridge a gap for this group.
That wouldn't be a, when I tell you it's not a problem, but what I always like to do is give you the information, whether extreme or not, that there are cases out there. That's all. So, council can make that determination. And I can actually provide you with how many people we have in those categories. Because that may give you a, a clear picture of what you're looking at for dollars.
Madam City Manager wanted to say something, then I'm gonna go to Councilman Wood.
And we're gonna spell all this out in the detailed meetings, but I just wanna point out, there are two classifications of employees. There are, there are employees that are considered hazard pay that are direct frontline employees, and then there are the others. And to Dr. Whitaker's point, we could definitely look at the ones that are in any of those categories as the other. But the hazard pay, the direct payments that we're getting from ARPA would address those that are on the frontline, and then it would be everyone else.
And like last year, what we did, remember, I don't know if y'all were here, but the five hundred dollar thank you bonus we did, had to come out of general fund because everybody did not qualify because of those specific things that, and categories that we were considering. We wanted to be fair and give everybody something, but they just didn't qualify under the guidelines of that federal funding, those dollars.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I know, I think we can extend this a little bit longer because I know we're supposed to move this to, you know, private sessions or not. But I, I got a question just about, I didn't know we went into detail about the incentives that the employees may get if they do receive, I guess, be fully vaccinated. Is it, you know, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars?
Great question.
I don't know exactly what the incentive was, day of pay, you know, I don't know.
So, the incentive would run fifteen hundred for employees full-time and seven fifty for part-time.
Okay. That's the incentive for getting, being fully vaccinated. And yeah, thank you, Ms. Mimi. And also, I got another question for community. I think we was talking about what you have on your line item, crime reduction strategies. You know, it's, it's, it's been talked about a lot, about camera systems in different communities. Is this something that we would direct? Or is something that our law enforcement direct with these funds to possibly even look at a camera system? I mean, you know, I, I think it's just well overdue, especially in certain areas. And this could, you know, help fight crime?
So, what we're doing is we're partnering with some of like PHRA, because PHRA have properties that they're needing additional dollars for security because of things that are happening in our, within our community. So, it's assisting them and helping with those specific areas that are in need. And so, yes, cameras are a part of that.
Do we have like a timeline on that? You know, I'm just saying, this is...
Well, I think right now, the, the consensus was to, to talk about those in our private meetings.
Right.
So, because this may not even be on the agenda once we go.
Okay. Okay. And one more question. The homeless shelter, is there, is this just a proposal for how much this may cost? Or do we have some type of idea of, you know, where this possibly may be or can be located? I know we, we possibly run, operating this ourselves as a city, but we do have a, a idea of where this may be located and, and be operational.
So, the so, Department of Social Services Director, Ms. Littlehill, we've identified, and she has identified a, a site that is already owned by the city, so the land is there. So, what we're looking at is what the cost of the homeless shelter would be for property that we already own.
Do we have any more questions? Councilman Wood?
Mr. Terry, on the recreation programs where it says before and after school and student scholarships?
Yes.
Are we working with the school system? Is, I mean, we love funding the schools and, and all, but if this is something that the schools can pick up? Because they're getting federal funds, too.
And actually, that's one of, I'm, I'm glad you brought that point up because that is significant as it relates to the recreation programs as well. We are working and talking to the schools, and we've asked them to submit a priority list of the projects. They're not on the same methodology that we're on. They're on a reimbursement basis. So, what we have talked about is the city taking the lead on a number of those projects that can be reimbursed. And then that would allow us to have free resources to use at the council and the schools' discretion. So, that's, that's the plan, is to try to leverage as many of those funds as we possibly can. Anything that qualifies on their schools is to use those first. And because they're the more restricted funds. And then we would look to city funds to have, to leverage anything else that we needed to do. So, those are under consideration.
Okay. Yeah, I was asking because, like I said, we can find as much funding as possible to get to our citizens.
Yes. Yeah.
And, and I think the consensus of council, last meeting and the previous meeting, and we received an email today, is that we wanna put more money into helping our people, more than anything than some of the other initiatives mentioned. So... So do we have any more questions before we move on?
Just, just one more observation. I've, I forgot to mention it. As, as you look at expanding the direct payments, some cities have incorporated funds that help first-time home buyers, those who need mortgage assistance. So if there's any way that that can be built into part of the direct payment aspect.
And what I want to do is, because we want to ensure that we use as much money for the things that city council wants to identify, is when we meet, I can also get with Pam Littlehill to show that the state has these same programs. So if we can use our funds in, for direct payments or things like that, and we won't hold them up for things that are already available to them. We want to be able to do that. So when we come back, I can definitely have an outline of what is available.
Madam City Manager?
Nothing else. I, I think we'll, we got our direction and we'll set up those, those meetings.
Okay. What, next?
Members of council, we, you have a motion for closed meeting.
Councilwoman Burke?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.23711A.7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding events related to monument protest.
It's been moved and properly second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle? Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover is absent. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
We are in close. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to certify in a second?
I have it, Vice Mayor. I hereby move that each council member certify that, to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Second. It's been moved and properly second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover is absent. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes. Before we move on to our regular meeting, I ask for a five-minute break.